Okay. Okay, today is May 17th, 2003. It is 6:32. And this is the regular meeting for the Board of Directors for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. We have a quorum including Mr. Brewster, who is hooked up through Zoom. Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Can you pull him up on the screen, please?
Okay, we're going to move to our regular meeting agenda. And as I said, Mr. Brewster, Vice President Brewster, that is, Benjamin Brewster, is joining us through Zoom. And I appreciate you being able to join us, though. Thank you very much. Call to order and announce a quorum. We already did that. Citizens comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the present or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Lori?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no citizens and no comments. Reports and updates. Agenda item number one, staff reports. A, capital improvement projects. B, operations reports. C, finance reports. And D, a digital platform analytics.
Good evening, directors. A few updates for you tonight on capital improvement projects. Our fiscal year 2023 waterline project, we had a pre-construction meeting last week, and we have issued the notice to proceed to begin construction on May 30th or soon thereafter. The contractor has the intention of beginning on Riviera Court and then starting to work their way through Lee Court, Berkshire, Sunset, and then eventually the Skyline Drive. As we discussed before, this is a six-month-long contract, but we're hopeful that the weather will permit and they can get in and out as soon as possible to try to keep from imposing themselves as much as possible on the residents. Our pump station improvement project, the consultant is still working on finalizing 100% design documents for that. We are still awaiting response from TCEQ, and we're still scheduled to bid for that in July of 2023. Lift station generators, we're starting to see a little bit of movement on that. The contractor has met with staff and have access to the generator sites, and they've begun preliminary layouts of where those generators are going to be placed. And the FY 2023 wastewater improvements are still underway. The contractor had some slow-ups this last month, but they have began making some of the point repairs, which a lot of them seem to be service line connections at the main. So they're still working diligently on that project. The FY 2023 lift station improvement project, the materials for that lift station vault and the permanent bypass have all been received. They're on site. And as a matter of fact, tomorrow morning, this project is scheduled to be completed beginning at 7:00. So if everything goes according to plan, we'll have everything buttoned up and the lift station functioning back in service by early afternoon. Okay, so with regards to some of the other informational reports, I had two requests this month for videos. So Director Carr and I had a conversation about the wastewater improvement project one day. They just happened to be in front of his home doing a service line cutout. So sometimes, or most often, we'll have blockages in our main, and they'll be caused by intrusions of pipe and/or roots in the main or service line. So one of the things that we do is we utilize some of the newer technology. And one is utilized to clear the main itself, either cut the service line out or the root intrusion. So that's going to be one video. And then we have what's called a camera with a robotic end on it that they can turn and look into the service line and cut out or make openings into the service line as well. So that'll be the second video. So with that being said, let's go ahead and start, Rob, with media one, please. So what you see right here is one of those intrusions in the main itself. So this is generally what's causing inflow infiltration. And what you can see is there's a bit, it's almost like a orbital bit, that can expand to the diameter of the pipe. And they sit there and they work that head until they make the complete cut of the service line. So this is one way that we can open up something without having to do an excavation.
That doesn't damage the pipe, the existing pipe?
Sometimes, if the pipe already has cracks or fissures in it, there is a possibility that that piece can damage it. But what we typically do is we'll go back in with a trenchless point repair and we'll do a sleeve.
What they're doing is a concrete line with a PVC coming in.
That's what this is. This is a clay, this is clay pipe that you're looking at. And if, I'd like to point out, too, how well that pipe is in. The condition of that pipe is in very, very good condition for its age. And just wanted to give you all a second to kind of see, you know, the cutoff pieces there, and they end up grabbing a hold of it and pulling it out of the main. But you can see how that bit looks right there.
That's pretty good. And these videos are going to be posted, correct?
Well, they'll be on this video in the archives for tonight's meeting.
So this piece that was cut off was part of a service main coming in?
That's correct. It was a service connection.
It protruded down into...
Which, yeah, what they did was when they built the houses, they just stabbed the pipe in, in the line. They didn't go, okay, let's put it in, you know, eight, 10 inches. They just stabbed it in there. And in my, the case on my street was, it was about halfway blocking the pipe, you know, and because when they built the house, they just stabbed it. They built those houses in 83, 84, something like that.
Improper, improper appearances that they make the actual tap connection with. Okay, Rob, if you don't mind going to media two, please. So what this is, is you're actually in the main, and you're looking up into the service line. And you can see how that pipe is shoved down into the 45.
Yeah.
That will catch rags and solids and whatnot, and creates a blockage. So we're eliminating that problem. And I tried to minimize the video so it wouldn't too long, but it's literally just an orbital head there that has a cutting tool on the end of it.
Like a router bit.
Correct. Correct.
That's pretty good, that they can operate it like that.
That first video, how large, what size diameter was that pipe?
The main itself was a six-inch, and the service line was a four. This is a four-inch service line you see here. But they'll just go through there, and they'll work their way, and they'll keep cutting on that until they get it nice and...
Yeah, obviously, these guys used to be dentists, right?
Probably, probably so.
Shouldn't, shouldn't these, when these lines, service lines come into the main lines, shouldn't they have something that holds them in place rather than just...
Well, so I'm going to use this one as example. Those are compression fittings, but sometimes during construction, they'll get ran over, they'll get hit. So more than likely, that's what happened on this one. Either the contractor that was installing it didn't know when to stop pushing the pipe in, or it was run over, or, or pushed in by pieces of equipment, concrete trucks, something of that nature.
But you could have issues with settling. I mean, you've got a line...
Settling's not, settling's not going to typically cause this. This is, again, it was probably back in the 80s. Nowadays, when we do new construction, we do post-construction TV, so we go in and make sure that issues like this are identified and corrected before we accept the project.
Okay.
And this is before the city even was, you know, in place, I think it was 86th Town and Trophy Club?
You're probably right. Okay, now, with that being said, on the digital platform side of things, we have the video tonight. So far, this video that we did with Scott Fuller, he is the golf course superintendent over Trophy Club Country Club. So far, his video has received the most activity thus far, which is good. But we're talking about, it's a two-part series, and we've already had the second one posted, but Director Brewster requested that we show this tonight to everyone. And so when you're ready, Rob, if you want to show that video, please.
I'm Scott Fuller. I live here in Trophy Club. I've been a resident for about 25 years now, and I'm also the director of golf maintenance at both of the golf courses here in town. Winter finally over, and we're now in spring, I highly recommend that everyone in town gets an irrigation checkup for their entire system. Before the season starts every year, I do, and I highly recommend to anyone else, is that you do a complete evaluation of your whole system. Walk through each zone, visually do it, do it during the daytime, and see if there's anything that does need to be repaired, and get this repaired before you even use the system. Be shocked, especially right this time of year, how many heads I see that have blown off, and they're just shooting, water shooting straight up in the sky. I see multiple sprinklers every single day that are broken or need to be adjusted. Okay, we're here at the control box, and what I want to do is I want to go to Station Two to show you just how important it is to do a seasonal or a springtime checkup of your sprinkler system. I will go to manual. We will flip over to Station Two. It's set for 25 minutes. We will flip to run. Water should be coming on. We'll take a look out here. And you'll notice all the grass that came up with the sprinkler. That's because it hasn't run in quite a while. And you'll notice there's water bubbling out of the base of the sprinkler. There's probably an O-ring that's gone bad, maybe during the freeze in December, who knows? But either way, I need to get this sprinkler dug up, have it repaired or replaced, and because if not, here in a couple of minutes, water's just going to be running down my driveway into my garage. Yeah, if you need to repair a leak or a sprinkler head or have one replaced, and you're just not comfortable doing it yourself, there's a lot of reputable irrigation sprinkler companies around. What I see a lot is on the Facebook group, you'll see somebody post saying, hey, I've got a broken sprinkler in my front yard. Anybody out there have somebody they know that can fix it that they trust or that's reasonable? And you'll get a ton of replies. Just a little heads up, though, you go on YouTube, and some of the irrigation repair videos that are available, and you'd find that it's pretty easy to do. A lot of the repairs that happen in a homeowner are not that difficult. Okay, we're back here at the control box. And once you've gone out, and we've, like here, we've gone through Zone Two, and we've noticed that there's a sprinkler leaking next to the garage. So now that we've identified that, we move on to Station Three, and then we go out and we do the same thing. We walk over to Station Three, we check each head, make sure it's popped up, make sure it's high enough, and it's raising up high enough to water over the grass, and make sure it's functioning right. After three, obviously, we go four, five, six, and seven until we're, until we've completed our audit of the system.
Good job.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, one little tip to add to that video is the people, when they test their sprinkler systems, they can go to Lowe's or... Really? They can go to Lowe's or Home Depot and buy those flags, those little red flags, and mark them as they pop up, because when they go back down, you're like, it's around here somewhere. And they can put a flag there, so when they either repair it or an irrigation person comes out, they know exactly where it is, the bad one, so.
Hey, Rob, will you check the microphones, please? I think you may have us too low now.
Okay. Very good video. Thanks to Scott for doing it, and Ben for suggesting that.
Yeah, it was a good video. We probably had about 45 minutes worth of content, and we were able to cut it down and get some good, good material. We have a second video that came out as well.
As he stated, this time of year is the best time to do it, rather than come here next month and go, my water bill's off the chart.
Correct.
It's like, okay, you got a geyser in your backyard.
And the intent, too, is, once we get these videos built out, we'll have a nice place for them to be on the website itself, so people can find them there as well.
Yeah, especially if you have yard workers that cut your grass, they have those zero turns, and they run over them or turn on them, and I can't tell you how many times they broke mine.
Right.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any comments on that? Steven, I know you've got something there. You've got that look.
Your neighbor over there is a...
Yeah, go ahead. He needs to hit me, because I don't look to the right.
Yeah, the other thing that goes along with these videos, or this particular, or lawn rid videos, is, I think, a necessity to push the fact that a homeowner can get a free inspection from the TR...
And Regional Water District.
TRWD, simply by calling and putting in a number, and then you get in line. And there's no cost for that. They come out and they evaluate not only for leaks, but they evaluate where the heads are spraying, may make adjustments there at no cost. They will talk to you about the type of head you have and whether it's the best type of head for your particular installation. And once again, there's, there's no cost to this. I've had it done. It was extremely beneficial. They'll even tell you how long you need to water an area, and they'll also talk to you about irrigating or watering and then letting it set, and then watering again to allow it to soak in, and that prevents runoff. So there's a lot of benefits to having that guy come out for no cost.
Correct. And that link is also on our website as well to fill in that form request.
You're going to post this on Facebook?
It's already been posted on Facebook, yes.
If you could, put that link to what Bill just said.
I usually...
We already, we already did that in another post. Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect.
That was on the irrigation checkup post.
And when I repost in my edit, I go back and find it and edit.
Correct.
And one thing is, we have all these power surges throughout Trophy Club, and timer boxes like to reset themselves and go off at like 2:00 in the morning.
Right.
So we need to make sure we get those checked when they come out and check your sprinklers. Okay, very good, Alan. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ben, and thanks to Scott. Okay, moving on. We're all done with reports and updates?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have agenda item two, consider an act to approve the April 19th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Do, I'll entertain a motion, and I have Mr. Rose.
I move to approve the April 19th, 2023 regular minute meetings as amended at the DAS, and the amendment was, there was some excess verbiage in the motion that was made.
And that was on agenda three of the regular session, correct?
Yep, yep, that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion by Director Rose. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have Secretary Treasurer Harper providing a second. Do we have anything else on that? I see none. Okay, all in favor of item two on the consent agenda? Show of hands. Okay, unanimous? Okay, moving on. Regular, or regular session, agenda item number three, receive update strategic committee. And it was myself and Secretary Treasurer Harper that attended the meeting. And the first thing out of the chute that we agreed on is there'll be a common voice or comment on these meetings, so you don't have, that was red. No, that was actually purple or something discussion. Everyone agreed that Chris would put it, we actually had a lady, I can't remember her name off the top of my head. Do you remember her name?
I do not, sir.
Let me look real quick and I'll...
She worked out of his office.
Right, she worked for, with Chris. Anyway, she, she took the minutes, and I will just read what occurred. At the meeting, there was Alan, if you were there, look at that for, myself, Secretary Treasurer Harper from the Town and Trophy Club. It was represented by Councilmember Jeffrey Beach, and Steve Flynn, and Acting Town Manager Patrick Arata was there from the Town of Westlake, is represented by the Mayor Sean Kilbride, and Wade Carroll was acting as a representative.
Becky Schaefer was her name?
Becky.
Becky Schaefer.
Yeah, thank you very much for looking that up. Becky Schaefer and Chris were there from New Gen Strategies. We had the meeting on May 1st in the fire station conference room. And what we discussed are, we have five items to be listed here. On Friday, April 21st, Representatives, excuse me, on the meeting time, it was actually the 21st, Representatives of the Town and Trophy Club, the Town of Westlake, and the Trophy Club Mudd Utility District Number One, met to officially kick off a formal study to determine the feasibility and financial impact of potentially merging the mud with municipalities. The second item was, study group presented consensus agreement that the purpose of the effort is to determine what path of action results in equitable and financially justifiable decision. The key question to be answered is, what action is the best, in the best interest of the citizens and ratepayers both now and in the future? The third item was, all parties were equally represented and worked together to outline the various scenarios for the consideration as the feasibility study is conducted. The fourth item was, the group will meet again on Thursday, June 1st, 2023, to consider any initial results that may be available at the time. The last item is, it is anticipated that the initial phase of the feasibility study will be completed within 60 to 90 days. Once completed, the results will be shared with all parties. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Okay, so again, it's one voice. I'd rather not comment any further than just what everyone else is passing out at the Town of Westlake, in the Town of Trophy Club, so everybody's on the same page. Okay? So I'm just going to move on.
Fair enough.
Okay, we're on, you agree with what I said?
Yes, I might add that Chris, who moderated the meeting, was just very professional.
Oh, yeah.
Very, super great job.
Couldn't get any better than that.
And the group was very congenial.
Yeah. Everybody was good. The cookies were good, right?
And coffee, yes.
I don't drink coffee, but yeah, I'll take your word. But, okay. Agenda number four, consider an act to elect officers of the Board of Director. Okay, the way this usually happens, we can either go by each position, we can not elect anybody, or we can do, elect certain people and replace them by other people. And I'll entertain any motion anyone has.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep the officers as is. I believe Doug here is doing a fabulous job as secretary. You're doing a great job as president. And Ben, I think you're doing a great job as well.
Okay, so the current positions are myself, Kevin Carr as president, Benjamin Brewster as vice president, and Doug Harper as Secretary of Treasury. And Tracy, his Director Hunter has made a motion to keep things status quo. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain any other, well, we'll ask for a second before we can, do I have a second?
Nominations don't require seconds.
Okay, does anyone else have any nominations?
If they, if it's acceptable to the Secretary of Treasury and acceptable to the Vice President and yourself.
Acceptable to me.
Okay?
Yeah.
It's a good plan.
Yeah. Honored, and thank you very much. Okay, Tracy made a motion. We're going to take a vote on that motion. Okay, so the motion by Director Hunter is status quo. Do I have a second on her motion?
No motion. It's a nominee, it's still, it's down to a nomination. You can just vote on, vote on.
Well, we're going to, it says consider an act to elect, so to make it all legal, we're going to do a motion just to make it legal, so.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Ben Brewster. Any discussion? I see none, all in favor of the Director, show of hands. It's unanimous, thank you very much. Mr. Brewster, you've got another year. Mr. Harper, another year, whether it's good or bad. And myself, another year. Okay, thank you very much, Paul. Okay, number five, consider an act to select directors to serve on the Budget Committee. Okay, again, I'm going to ask for a motion on this one or a nominee. Let's start with nominees first. Anyone want to be on there? I think Mr. Harper, Secretary Treasurer Harper should be on there, being the Secretary of Treasury. Do you have any problem?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, so I make a motion for him, and we probably need to have two on there, so...
I'd like to be on the board or on that committee again.
Excuse me?
Director Brewster would like to be on the Budget Committee again.
Okay, I have a Director Brewster, or your Vice President Brewster.
Yes.
Yeah, Vice President Brewster would be, like to be on there, and I heard Director Rose would be on there.
I'll withdraw mine.
Okay, Director Rose withdraws his name from consideration. Tracy, you have anybody?
No, I agree with...
Maybe Matt or something, you know, bring Matt up here. Okay. You have anybody? Okay, I'm good with the two nominees. We have Secretary Treasurer Harper and Vice President Ben Brewster will be the representatives on the Budget Committee. And again, I'm going to take a motion and, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for Harper and Brewster to be on the Budget Committee.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Okay, all show of hands, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much, Vice President Brewster and Secretary Treasurer Harper for volunteering for that.
I'd also like to add that we're planning on trying to start the Budget Committee the first week in June, so that way we can go ahead and get our first round a month earlier and bring that back with preliminary information in the June meeting as well, okay?
Okay. You hear, you hear that, Ben?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be seeing a meeting request probably come out later this week.
Okay, we're up to number six, consider an act to adopt order number 2023-0517A as an apple, declaring the following operation, equipment and vehicle to be surplus property to the district and authorize staff to sell such property. It's A, 2015 Ford F-350. B, Generac, is that how you say that?
Yes.
Generator. C, Auto Sampler. D, HP Design Jet Printer. We have four, four items to consider surplus, and we auction those off?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So does someone want to make a motion to adopt that order? Come on, man.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah. Well, let's make a motion first, and then do the discussion. Okay?
I'll make a motion to consider an act adopt ordinance 2023-0517A, declaring the following operations, equipment, and vehicle to be surplus property of the district and authorize staff to sell such property.
Okay, just clarify, you said ordinance, and it's an order.
Order, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's...
Actually, you want a motion to do that rather than consider an act, because we're considering enacting.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I know what you mean. Okay, so we have a, a motion for the order number 2023-0517A to sell such equipment. Do I, now you can...
Yeah, my, my comment was, is there a minimum price for these items that we would accept?
So typically, we fall back to the auction company to help us determine what that minimum price is, because they typically get to see what the going rates are for used equipment such as this. And so they'll typically let us know what they think the starting bid should be.
Okay.
And we typically go off of their recommendation.
So it's not, we're not going to sell it for 10 cents?
That's correct.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Director Hunter, second, the motion. Okay, any further discussion? I see none, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, unanimous, thank you very much, Ben. Okay, number seven, agenda item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding cash reserves policy. And this is really, we just nominated or put Vice President Brewster and Secretary Treasurer Harper on the Budget Committee, and it's just to review the reserves that are in place, see if we need to keep them, increase them, decrease them, whatever. And Stephen is going to do a quick presentation. Emphasis, quick, quick.
I'll make, I'll make a click.
Okay.
Good evening, directors. What we're going to do is kind of go over, this was presented to you last week. This is, so this is where we're sit as of the end of April. This is going to be our cash balances and then what our reserves are on this next page here. So if you have any questions, we can run through this pretty quickly. This is the total amount of cash that we have in the three different making institutions that we have, which is Prosperity is our main depository, Texpul is an investment, and then our escrow that we require to have in there. And as we scoot down here, we're going to see the cash types. We present this over the last several years, breaking down basically what is actually in our cash balances here, and then what is spendable, what's not. So customer deposits, committed funds, those are all set aside for dedicated stuff. Then we have basically our signed, signed capital projects, which carry over year to year, and what's remaining. what's remaining. And then we have our unrestricted fund balances here. So roughly about $10 million is what we have here in unrestricted fund balances.
Will you widen out, hit that little arrow on the right, there you go.
And now it's wider. The money didn't grow, though. So we'll go down to cashed funds, and this is just a snapshot to let everybody see basically where the money is and what fund it is associated for. As you can see, the big blue bar right here, that's our general fund where a majority of our cash is sitting at, and then everything down here from our GASB reserves to, this is just really the committed funds and the construction funds or the bond reserves that we have for INS. All right, so we're going to move down here to the meat and potatoes here. So this, let's see if I can get this squeezed in here. All right, hopefully that's readable there. So this is a snapshot, once again, as of April. So every year, usually during our budget process, we would bring this forward, part of the cash reserve policy, and we would show you where everything sits. Now, these things, these items will fluctuate throughout the year as money kind of moves around, but as a snapshot, President Carr wanted to see this and kind of see where we're sitting for all of our funds. These are the dedicated funds that we have as far as our policy, and then down here you'll see where our targets are based on our policy, and then our minimum and our max and where we're actually sitting for year-to-date as of now. And I will entertain any questions.
On number two, the equipment replacement, is there a reason why we have more reserves than the maximum amount?
So on their GASB, so in prior years when the policy was created, I want to say about four years ago roughly, at the time, we really didn't have a refined GASB spreadsheet or, you know, for our future replacement, so we went off of 1.5% of all of our assets. Now, as Al and I have been working throughout the years here, we have a very good refined GASB. So this number here is based on what our policy is for 1.5, but our true GASB future replacement schedule actually indicates that we should have a little bit more than what we have in here, so this is what we have sitting here as of right now. The end of last fiscal year, we did have some remaining surplus that was in undesignated that was moved over to GASB to get us to where we need to be based on our new spreadsheet. So Al and I would like to revisit this this year for the policy and actually use the future replacement schedule that we have built out now for GASB instead of doing a, just a 1.5% of our assets. And as you guys can probably imagine, cost for replacement has skyrocketed over the last several years, so it gives us a better refined, true cost of what a replacement pump vehicle, you know, any equipment, what the true cost would be over its life expectancy versus just a 1.5%. Yes, sir.
There is no undesignated reserve fund that was taken out of the policy when it was passed.
So you're talking about this one right here?
Yep.
But this, all this is, is as of right now, I don't have a place for this to go.
Yeah.
Now.
We did have a fund, but we, it was eliminated.
Well, but technically, it's in the operating fund right now.
It's in the operating fund. This one doesn't exist, undesigned.
Yeah, so the undesigned, the perfect world is to have that zero at all times.
Yeah.
So what I do every year is I bring this forward and say, once we get a closer idea of where we are as far as what surplus we're going to have, this lets us know, okay, we have this money, and usually every year, we would, the board would make a decision to move it into one of the other associated funds that we do have.
Yeah.
Which happened last year, we moved it over to GASB and to the M&amp;R line or M&amp;R reserves that we had.
I just thought it was in capital reserves was where it was kept, but that's okay.
Undesignated reserves?
Yeah.
Technically, it's in operating, it's just sitting there as far as.
I mean, operating.
Yes, it's sitting in operating, correct.
Yeah.
But I like to pull it aside so you can see that this is really not a place, it doesn't really have to sit in operating.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'll leave it up to the two Directors to go through this and come back and give us a report. I mean, it looks like everything is closer to the max than it is like the first two. I mean, it's neck and neck with what the max is on here. So I don't really, personally, I don't think we need to be that high, but I'll let them assess it, and you can put a spin on it or whatever you want to do. Okay? And then, again, if we have to put more, like you said, cost is more for replacing things, so that might go up, but I think if anything, we should be in between the min and the max, not right at the max all the time.
Understand.
Okay.
And on the GASB, as we kind of talked about there, as we're refining that, we are adding some more items into our GASB, so this number actually will increase, our max will increase if we wind up going towards what's on our spreadsheet. So it's a lot better than it was, I would say, the last three, four years when this was in place, as far as how our refinement or what that GASB reserve should be.
Yeah, the more, the more numbers you can put in there, history and stuff, the more accurate.
Right.
Yeah, so, I know we used to use the reserves in the past to offset some of the increase in water costs out of Fort Worth, so just a consideration to, you know, keep the water costs low, which is good luck, you know, everything's going up. Okay. Anything else?
I have something.
Okay, go ahead.
Relax in your seats. I took a look around the board and realized that I don't think there's any history on the board as it results, as it goes to this particular cash reserve policy. So I asked the question, how many have reviewed the policy? It's in the packet, I think everybody's taken a look at it. For me, looking at this policy, it's a lot like doing a master's thesis presentation or a doctorate dissertation and defending it. The interesting difference here is something that I know Ben will tie in with is, it's very similar, writing this was very similar to writing the town charter, in that we hired a consultant, Dr. Del Table, who was the Assistant Dean of the UTA School on Public and Urban Studies, basically how you run a government. And one of the things that he said that was very eye-catching was, in this, in this work, you are, it's a plus factor, plagiarism. You should plagiarize your work, you should go out and find things that work for you and plagiarize them. Originality will get you into trouble. And so when I look and discuss this, this is what you have before you, is plagiarism at its finest. So that's the difference between this. Okay, taking a look at previous policies in the mud, I went back and did some research, and although agendas and minutes go back to the organizational meeting on April 24th of 75, a search of the online records shows that there were no hits on a cash reserve policy prior to June 16th of 2015. So as far as I know, the mud never had a reserve policy prior to that. On June 16th, 2015, item 10, the board also directed staff to prepare a cash reserve policy and bring it back to the July meeting for review. The board requested a reserve goal, excuse me, of 100% of the operating budget. That was a reserve goal they requested. At the July 21st meeting, and that, the directors at that time were Jim Ross, Neil Toomey, President Carr, and Jim Thomas and Jim Hayes. Jennifer McKnight was the GM. A motion was made by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Toomey to adopt the order, I got the number, approving a cash reserve policy. Director Hayes then said he would like to amend the motion to state that the cash reserve goal be moved from 100% to 50%, and that was amended by the First and Second. Then he said he would like to further amend the motion to state the district will endeavor to reach the 50% factor in a five-year period. That was amended and passed, and the whole motion was passed. I was out in the cheap seats at the time, and I watched this, and I immediately went, wait a minute, you went from 100% to 50%, and there was no real discussion on that change, so what are we really looking at here? So, and the fact that the district would endeavor to reach the 50% in a five-year period starting October 15th. It also said, the policy said, the cash reserve will be available to address one-time emergencies and unanticipated expenditure requirements. So this cash reserve policy that they had at the time was a single page, and it failed to quantify the threat that they were developing a cash reserve policy for. What they did is they said 50% of the operating reserves. So what you're doing is you have a fund that's designed to replace your operating reserves if they're not there. There was nothing that went ahead and specifically addressed the threat. So anyway, nearly two, a year later, two weeks after being elected, the mud, in May of 2016, Director Wilson called me to advise me that he had reviewed the mud's books at the organization, and the organization was nearly bankrupt, was the term he used. I was a little bit shocked when he said that, but turns out there was only $800,000 of operating capital in the mud. Then on August 16th, under a how, and I will use a how of protest and rate shock from our customers, we raised the water rates about 30%. The room was full of people, not happy campers, but that was the action that was really needed to be done. Long story short, as Kevin has alluded to, what the mud had done, and I have it in the records, it was in the minutes, Director Wilson said, basically what the mud's been doing is spending down the reserves to avoid raising rates, and so they had basically run the organization down. I don't want to see us go back there. Okay, the current policy. On September 19th, 2017, the board now is Wilson, Rose, Thomas, Hayes, and President Carr was absent. John Carman was the GM at the time. The action was to consider the prior policy, and I asked that have it, the item tabled and be assigned to work with staff to create a more all-inclusive policy. So the quote, "Item is tabled, Director Rose will work with appropriate staff to create a comprehensive policy." Now remembering that the first one took a month and was a page long. So I went in, and I didn't know anything about reserve policies other than what I had before me looked just a tad bit suspicious. So I went online, friend Google, and started doing research, and I reviewed a lot of documents, hundreds probably, and I eventually got down to where I had selected them out, and I'd look at them, I could start selecting them out, say, well, I'll look at this, I won't look at that. So, the ones I looked at, at that point, were American Water Works Association Cash Reserve Policy Guidelines, good place to start, American Water Works Association Rate Stabilization Fund, Seasonal Reserve Funds, AWWA M55 Developing Rates for Small Systems. Then I looked at Austin, I captured, these are the ones I captured, Austin Water Utility Revenue Stability Reserve Fund, Bushy Creek MUD, Texas Fund Balance Reserve Fund, City Anoka, Minnesota Utility Financial Reserve Policy, Bainbridge Island, Washington Fund Balance Policy, Columbia, Missouri Cash Reserve Policy, San Diego, California Reserve Policy. Then I also looked at the GFOA Association Best Practices for Working Capital Targets for Interpriced Funds, the Government Finance Officers Association Strategies for Establishing Capital Asset Renewal and Replacement Reserve Policies.
Mr. Rose, can I?
Yeah.
We get the picture that you looked at several, I don't think we need to list every one of them, I see a lot more on there, so.
You're looking, you're looking over his shoulder.
Well, I can see the list, so.
Yeah, I have another, about 10.
Yeah.
In here that I went, okay, that's the ones I'll come back and look at, because it got to a point where I was seeing the same thing over and over again, and I was like, forget it, move on. So after several drafts, I decided it would be prudent to get another director involved in the process. The first draft, accumulation of selected examples, was 42 pages long, 11,000 words. By the September 2018 meeting, I pared that down to eight pages and 2,700 words. Okay, so to 2017, 2018, now I'm ploring to 2018 now, we've been playing with about a year. We've got Wilson, Rose, Castaway, Flynn, and Chapman, Chapman was absent, and John Carman. I made a motion and seconded by Director Castaway to delegate myself and Director Flynn to work with the GM and finance manager, work on a reserve policy, to bring it back to board for approval. Frankly, there was enough information and enough diverse information, even what I boiled it down to, I still needed more input on it. Six months later, March 18th, same group, except Mark Chapman was absent, consider to take appropriate action on a reserve policy, second, okay, and review suggested changes by legal counsel and bring it back to the next meeting for approval, motion is withdrawn by the First and Second. Anthony Corbett suggested the board work with the district financial advisor and attain his insight to create a policy that would best suit the district. General Manager John Carman stated he would like to take the policy back to subcommittee with the advice of council. Carman would like to receive input from a financial advisor, including debt management in the policy, and bring it back to board for review. Director Wilson feels that the number of fund accounts need to be reduced from three to three to two, three or four. Director Rose is not interested in adding debt management in the cash reserve policy. Attorney Corbett suggested removing the unassigned fund, that we just talked about that. Director Flynn will work on a policy that contains less fund accounts and send it to the committee for review and discussion. Attorney Corbett feels the policy can be changed to achieve everyone's goal, discussion only, no action taken. Now, as a note, my objection to the debt management going into the cash reserve policy was based on having not seen that in any, any of the reserve policies I had reviewed. I could find it occasionally standing alone someplace or would see it standing alone, but it was never inside of a policy. I did previously make the offer to the GM to include that debt management in the reserve policy, if he could provide me copies of two or three reserve policies where it was in it, or we could just write a separate management, debt management policy. Neither of those happened. On May 20th, 2019, we brought the revised policy, Steve and I did, Flynn, well, we came, came back to the board, we provided a presentation regarding the AWWA guidelines, discussion ensued, the item is tabled, direction to provide to committee, and we brought back to the next meeting. So the next meeting, we come back, and the other reason it came back was Steve, I think Greg Wilson wasn't available.
Sorry to interrupt you again, can we summarize this rather than have who voted what, who was wearing what and type deal? Can you put it in a nutshell?
Sure.
I understand you created a reserve policy. I respectfully disagree with what you said earlier about, first you said there wasn't a reserve policy, then you alluded to a reserve policy from the mud, from the time, the origin up until 2015, I think you mentioned where.
Couldn't find one until 2015.
Well, you mentioned a reserve policy at meetings where we voted on it, so we had very, very good accounting people. The, in 2015, how many people had accounting background in the board that you just mentioned? Very little. We had Pete Renke, one of the top accountants. We had Neil Toomey, very, he worked as an accountant. Jim Hayes worked as an accountant. And we used the, to keep the rates down, yes, we did use the reserves. We financed the fire station, guess what? We didn't raise any water rates or anything, we built, we did trucks. So I'm not going to sit here and defend the other ones, but also acknowledge that you created, you created a reserve policy, but I don't need to know the ins and outs on what happened and where it was born and votes at each meeting. If you would, just summarize it, so.
The final motion.
Okay.
Motion made by myself, seconded Flynn to approve the reserve policy, and strike sentence, reserve targets are shown in Appendix A, change the last sentence to read, reserve targets shall be adopted as part of the annual budget, and eliminate Appendix A. That was approved unanimously. This process took 22 months, 11 draft documents, numerous meetings, in order to perfect a six-page policy. In the end, all those that I listed before, all of those organizations, all that stuff, boiled down to using 3.7, AWWA M54, Austin Water Utility, Bainbridge, San Diego, San Lorenzo Water Valley, San Placer, South Placer, and the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District information. I think, I mean, personally, I'll put our policy as it stands up against any other policy for a utility district in the state of Texas and against many cities, quite frankly. This is an outstanding policy. Now, having said that, are there opportunities to improve it by fine-tuning percentages and stuff in a policy, bringing in the cash asset management plan to make that work better? Absolutely, absolutely. It can be, it can be improved, but it is an outstanding policy because rather than taking a number, a percentage, and throwing it against a wall and see if it sticks, you now look at what you need your reserves for, and you come up with a total in the end game, and you can go back. you can go back at any point and say, we need to adjust this, or it sets just fine. And so my point is, it's an outstanding project.
Yeah, and it's just within, like any policy procedures, they're subject to change to improve as time goes on, and as we mentioned, as I mentioned to Stephen, the more information, history that you have or numbers you can plug in, the more accurate you're gonna get, and it's similar to when GPS first came out in the early 90s. I mean, they released two or three satellites, you couldn't pinpoint. Now, you could tell this pen is laying on this desk by this laptop, and it's the same thing, the more information you have, the better. Are we gonna continue to use the policy? I don't know. It's up to the people on this board and the people looking at it, and Stephen and Alan, to look at and say, hey, we need to tweak this or change something on this one. That's what we're here for, not to use the same template over and over and over again. So, okay.
But there are, there is a reason for the minimums and the maximums, those are set out in the policy, those could be adjusted. For funding on this, the funding for this has occurred differently than is set in the policy, and the policy talks about funding during the budgeting process in that you might allocate a line item budget to put money in here. This was, this, this funding, if my memory serves me correctly, has all occurred based on revenue pluses at the end of a fiscal year, where we were, where we had more funds, where we had not spent the funds we anticipated, and yet we had the revenue, and so we had a delta there, and we used that delta to fill this out.
Well, one difference is your funding, instead of going out for bonds, you're using the water rates and stuff to pay for the projects that you do. That's, that was one rate, you failed to mention that on the increase of water. The other thing is, we brought Nugent in to do a study and see where our rates are supposed to be. So that's the history, you know, you can't change your history, but, okay, thank you very much for that presentation on the history.
You're welcome.
Of the policy. Okay, anyone have anything else on that topic? Okay, we're moving on. We're not gonna have executive session, I don't, we don't have anything going in. Tracy, you got anything?
No.
Doug?
Nope.
Mr. Brewster?
No.
Okay, you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, so we're gonna skip that, we're gonna go nine, we did not have executive session, 10, item 10, Items for Future Agenda, or agendas, it could be more in the next one. So Alan, do you have anything that needs going there?
I do not.
Okay, we're gonna get, you said June 1st is when you expect the budget, so could we, is it too premature to have an update on, from the committee, or?
We're gonna have our first committee meeting more than likely during the first week in June, so we won't be ready to present any preliminary numbers until maybe the first meeting in June at the earliest, and that would be very high level.
Okay, well, so going forward, we'll start an update from the budget in July?
That would be preferred, yes, but we want to go.
Lori, can you put that on there? And we're gonna have another strategic committee or whatever the gang is called?
Strategic committee meeting.
It's what?
Strategic committee meeting.
Right, okay, so we're gonna have another one June 1st, so we will have an update for that in the next meeting. A common voice again. Do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Trace?
No.
Harper? Mr. Brewster, you got anything you want to add?
No.
No additional videos or anything like that?
We'll see.
Okay, we'll see, we'll leave that open. Okay? Okay, next, agenda item 11, Set Future Meeting Date, June 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Anyone have any problems or know that they're not gonna be attending? Are you still gonna be in West Virginia, Mr. Brewster?
Uh, no, I will be home.
Okay. Okay. You have anything, Bill?
Nope.
Okay. No one has any problems on that, and we will adjourn the meeting at 7:27.